Evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order a regular scheduled council meeting for October 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Miller, will you take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Potem Squire.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Here.
Mayor, you do have a forum with all seven members present.
Thank you. Next item, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, October 10th, 2022, as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 7-0. We have no recognition tonight. I don't -- is anybody here from the county or the state? I don't see nobody here for that. Next item, we have a presentation from our city manager, Mr. Dockerty.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Last few weeks, Councilwoman Karafodis has been asking about ways of getting the agenda out to the people in the public. We do have a couple processes we're going through now. One, we have a QR code in the lobby for anyone that just happens to come into City Hall. They can click on with their phones. We also have it on our website as a regular basis. Besides, on the front page, it's also in the agenda list, so you can see even the past ones for the last five, six years, I believe. We also have putting out our advertisement for council meetings now. There's also a list now that you can click on. In the past, we'd just say "advertising meeting" for Monday night. Now the agenda's included. But what we put together was a little presentation for just a couple of minutes that kind of explains the notify me process that we have on our webpage. And what we're gonna do is show to everybody a little bit now. It might be a little quick, but it will be put out again for everybody to see at another time. So you just click on some buttons which you want to be notified with. So if the agenda is uploaded, you'll receive an email that says it's just been changed. Would you like to take a look at it? You can also pick many different things from our city. Might drive you crazy if you click on too many, but you'll be able to see here in this presentation on the screen.
The city of Garden City has introduced a brand-new way to get notifications from the city's website. The Garden City Notify Me subscription is easy to use and allows residents to subscribe to email and text message notifications from several notification lists like calendars, Newsflash, Alert Center, and the Agenda Center. These instructions can even be done on a mobile phone. To get started, head to the GardenCityMI.org, navigate to the "How Do I?" menu, and down to the "Sign up for" and choose "Notify Me." Here you will find step-by-step instructions how to subscribe to Notify Me that will be shown in this video. At the Notify Me webpage, which can be found at www.GardenCityMI.org/notify-me, you are going to enter your email address and click Submit. This will create your account. If you want to receive text messages, click the check box "I would like to receive text messages," and enter your phone number in the box that appears, then press Save. Now that you've entered all your contact information, you can scroll down to find all the notification lists you can subscribe to, either by email or text message. To subscribe to a notification list, click on the email or cellphone icon directly next to that list. Before you receive any alerts or notifications, you are going to get an email or text notification to confirm your subscription to that list. You won't receive any notifications until you confirm the subscription.
All right.
That's awesome.
Abrupt ending. Yes, so this will be put out not only just on a regular webpage, on the front page, so people can click on that at this little link, as well as social media. So that's, like I said, you can click a lot of those. It'll drive you crazy getting constant beeps as the website's updated, or you could pick and choose what you'd like to see.
Awesome.
So that's it. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, community events. I'm gonna call up Jackie Perador from the Garden City Business Alliance.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to take a minute to share a little more about the Garden City Business Alliance, who we are, what we do. We're a nonprofit volunteer organization whose mission is as a resource for citizens, business owners, and community of Garden City residents. Our intentions are to create and extend support networks for fellow business owners, offer improved shopping experience for our customers, and to work with the city to make our community a better place. We are not the department of the city, but I feel we have a wonderful working relationship with the city and the city council. We host a website for members and shoppers, opportunities for networking with businesses and members, using in the summer contract series, trunk or treat. We also participate in the Sandman Parade to promote shopping local. So almost anybody can be a member. You go to our website, and I'm gonna segue right into trunk or treat. It's that time of year. It's October 27th. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 on Facebook and on our website. You can purchase tickets. You can donate time as a volunteer. You can have a posted trunk. You can reach out to any one of us, and we'll be happy for your help. You can also drop off candy if you wanted to at different businesses around the city, Liberty Tax, Carrot Sticks, the DDA, the Farmhouse. So if you just wanna drop off a bag of candy, we'll make sure all the kids get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine. We have no petitions or communications tonight, no public hearings. Move on to item 11, the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 11A, 1, 2, and 3.
Support.
Support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 7-0. Moving on to our action items. Item one, purchase of a 28-passenger shuttle bus. Mr. Dockerty.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that's somewhat surprising as to the R size doesn't have at this point. What we talked about in the budget workshops and was put into the capital improvement fund is the purchase of a bus, 28-passenger bus. Currently, we spend about $6,000 a year on renting buses for the limited trips we go on now. Summer camp is where it's heavily used and could be used a lot more on a daily basis. Senior trips, special sites around the region, they go out to Frederick Meyer once a year or so over there in Grand Rapids area. Seniors going to lunch groups, you can get together and say, you know, once a month, we're gonna go meet down at a restaurant or take a bus trip. A couple mornings a week, we're looking at the possibility of seniors from the Towers over to Radcliffe or some other locations. With our own bus, we could start taking some overnight trips outside of Michigan, maybe just down towards Cincinnati or somewhere else where you can actually spend the next night, because our cost is built in with just a staff person driving the bus rather than a bus rental and a higher-dollar bus driver. Even bus trips to sporting events, I've done some of this in my other locations I've been at. Instead of people driving, parking somewhere downtown, we'd take you right to the stadium door, bring you right back, reduce the issues of parking as well as drunken, drinking and driving. Then even rental groups would come by. We'd set up an hourly pay to rent the bus itself. And there, over the years, I've had people, small groups, that wanna go look at Christmas lights, some church groups. Others, maybe take going to the airport for a flight. They all meet somewhere in a parking lot, and our shuttle bus is able to take them. So we're able to garner some additional money on small groups, not the big bus stuff that we won't be interfering with other bus companies. But we do not have one in our city currently. And another benefit of, as I mentioned, I think at the last line of my letter, was you don't realize how much you can use a bus until you have it, is, and I've done this in other communities, where the council actually has a public meeting on the bus for a blight drive, driving around the city or looking at certain areas of the city, instead of just discussing it here with photographs. Public's included, press is included, anybody can go. I've just looked, going to different locations throughout the city and saying, here's the issues that we're talking about, especially when it comes to code compliance. So once we have the ability to have a bus, there's much more that we can do with it. And over time, it should overpay itself to a point or help with the mortgage, but you're looking at a 15-, 20-year purchase for such a bus. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Motion's in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis.
Can we discuss this, or can I make comments at this time?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure I approve of this purchase right now. I think it's a great idea for our seniors and our youth groups. I love the idea, and I want them to have every advantage possible, but I just have a problem with spending $140,000 on a bus, when for the past few months, we've been told there's not enough money to hire a grant writer, there's not enough money to hire an economic developer, not enough money to hire animal control, not enough money to spend $1,000 on a lawyer to talk about marijuana law. The other problem I have with it is, a few years ago, and I don't think this is when our current city manager was here, but Gordon Chevrolet offered to buy us a bus. They approached the president of the senior association at the senior towers, and when they asked about it, they were told that the bus would be too much of a liability. So I don't, the offer was declined then. That may be something that we can do again, and I'm not sure if we've checked with Gordon Chevrolet, or Ford dealership, or Ford Motor Company, or Chrysler, maybe another company. Have we contacted anybody to see if they would donate a bus to us? Have we looked into grants for senior transportation or youth programs? I'm just wondering if there's a few things that we should do before approving to spend the money when we may be able to get it for free or part of it for free.
Okay. I haven't talked to anybody. I don't know if Gordon Chevrolet or those guys would be willing to put that much into a bus, but there may be some kind of a deal.
Like I said, this was before you were here, I think.
Yeah.
It was the year before you came.
Yeah.
And they offered out of the blue. We didn't approach them, so.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, they probably wanted their name on it, but it's still worth a phone call to see if, you know.
Sure. No, I don't disagree.
So maybe we could table it until you look into it a little bit more?
It's up to the council. It can, I mean, approve it. I could still make those phone calls anyway without moving forward, but.
Well, if we approve it, we're approving you spend the money. If you find out it's for free, then.
Only if I call the company.
Exactly.
What's council's wish?
Can I make a motion that we table it until we find out more?
I have a question. Is there a state contract like there are through the lease cards?
No, we did not come across that. We did the straight purchase bid, and as you see, all three bids were within a thousand and some dollars of each other, which is tremendously unusual.
Okay. I have one more question. Have we already found out like how much the liability insurance in that thing, that would be?
It would not be anymore. My other communities, I purchased buses. It's no difference. It's just a speck on the balance sheet, because we have other vehicles that are.
I don't mean when we use it. I think in your statement, you said that we could possibly run it out.
We would drive it, and it would be a straight purchase rent.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely not handing it out to anybody.
Okay.
No, we would, yeah.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I support the idea of having this shuttle bus, and the reason I do is because I know I've been on senior trips before. And what they have to do is take the amount of money for the senior trip, cost of the bus, and divide it between all of the people that are on the bus, so the people on the bus are paying for the trip. Whereas in a case of having our own shuttle bus that would hold 28 people, the most they would have to pay is for a portion of the gasoline that is used, because it's our only staff member. So the idea of having the bus, I think, is a great idea, not only for the seniors, but also for a lot of different programs that we do around the city. Now, the question of is there grant money available? We don't know that, and I think it's a good thing to look into, because if there is grant money out there. But for something this specific, I guess I'm gonna question, because I know some of the bigger stuff that we've looked for, there wasn't even grant money for that, but it's worth looking into. But I fully support the idea of getting a passenger bus, and that was one of the things in our budget this year that was on the CIP. And it just makes a lot of sense, because there's so many times that it could be used. And I like especially the idea of transporting from the senior tower over to our new Radcliffe Center, so that they can participate, because some of those seniors aren't able to drive. They don't have vehicles, and they're dependent on somebody else taking them. So something like that would be a great idea also. So I think we'd get a lot of use out of it, whether we have a church group or something on it that's, that doesn't interest me necessarily, we could do it. But definitely for our seniors, definitely for Parks and Rec, and the summer program and things like that, there's a lot of places to use a bus. So I'm okay waiting until the next meeting, or we can vote on it tonight, because I think it's a great idea.
Well, I think we have a motion to table?
No, she didn't make the motion yet.
Oh, okay.
I have a comment. I see on here that it's a six-to-nine-month wait, so 180 to 210 days on delivery.
Yeah, he, I questioned, I questioned about it. He said he was looking more like 120. He gets, he can send it back with the better number. He said that's just a fill-in-the-blank that's automatically on their invoices, but.
I know you can't get an F-150 for about six months, so I'm not sure. And our ambulance and our fire truck are how many years?
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't have a problem waiting. I know on the Parks and Rec, since I'm a liaison to them, they had the idea, or they liked the idea of the bus, but I don't have a problem with waiting two more weeks to see if we can get some more info, maybe on grants and all the other stuff that would possibly be available. So I'm good with getting a bus, but I'm good with waiting two more weeks and get some more info.
I just wanna say I too love the idea of this. It was on our capital improvement program, so it was already budgeted. So those other things that we might have been discussing earlier that were brought up, because this was already budgeted in the capital improvement program, it's not the council saying no to other items coming forward, it's just that this was already budgeted too. So I do agree, though, that it would be a good idea for us to see if there's any additional funds out there, but I fully support this.
I agree with everybody. We can wait, we can wait two weeks. Just table for a future meeting.
Okay, can I make a motion to table it for a future meeting?
And I'll support that.
Okay. Any other comments from the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got a 7-0 vote to table. Okay, item two, Garden City Goodfellows On-Street Solicitation. I'm gonna call up the DDA Director, Kim Dold.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm not up here as the DDA Director, but as an officer of the Goodfellows for Garden City. What you have before you is, we're asking for permission to do our street solicitation with our newspaper. That occurs the Friday and Saturday immediately after Thanksgiving. I believe those dates are the 25th and 26th of November. That, along with very generous donations from our residents, is how we fund the Goodfellows every year. Last year, for many years now, our numbers are averaging right around 300 children every Christmas that we're able to help. So that's due to the very generous donations that we get, not only from our residents, but those driving through our city when we do our newspaper. So one of the other things that I did wanna bring up, we did have issues last year, because we just didn't have the volunteers to get out there with our newspapers. So if anyone belongs to a group, you wanna come out individually, anything like that, we would really appreciate it. We feed you very well. We're set up down at the Masonic Lodge every year, 8:00 to 4:00, of course, and that depends on the weather. But please come out, give us a hand, and help put those smiles on the children Christmas morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Jacobs.
I move to approve the Garden City Goodfellows' request to conduct on-street newspaper sales. Sale fundraisers on Friday, November 25th, Saturday, November 26th, and Sunday, November 27th, at the intersections of Ford and Middlebelt, Ford and Merriman, Ford and Vinoy, and Middlebelt and Warren, subject to the receipt of a Hold Harmless Agreement from participants in accordance with the city's policy of on-street sales.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any other comments from the table?
Very cause.
From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Item three, Management Audit Workshop wishes to call for a special meeting on November 28th at 5:30 PM at the police station community room.
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis.
Why isn't the scheduled for like the regular meeting, like when the other lawyers were here? Oh, I'm sorry, this is the management auto workshop? Yes. Okay. All right, never mind.
Mayor?
Councilmember DeMichael.
I move to approve a special meeting for Monday, November 28th, 2022, at 5:30 PM to review Charter Section 2.11B at the police station community room.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any further comments from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Jacobs.
I don't know if anyone noticed, but we do have a council meeting that night also.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we had made a decision to have it before the regular meeting, so that you would already be here on the campus.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew, so it can be, hopefully not a long meeting.
Any other comments? Table, from the general public?
John Murray Lather Street. The first issue I have is why can't we have that meeting in council chambers where it can be recorded? I think it's imperative that we document what's going on. The other thing is, is this managerial report, I have a FOIA from 1/19/2022. Why has it taken 10 months to address this? I think the lack of your having these managerial audits creates the questions on who made decisions on certain astronomical issues we've had in this town. I mean, I think we need to definitely look at having third-party professionals assist us on some of our key decisions. So I'm asking to have it recorded, and what kind of agenda will be provided for us prior to that meeting?
Okay, thank you. Leave that up to Mr. Miller when we do the roundtable, if you wanna answer that later when we do the roundtable. Any other comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 7-0. Moving on to other business, thrift store. Councilmember Karafodis, you wanted this on the agenda?
Yeah, I just have a little bit to say about it, nothing big. On Facebook last week, I asked for residents to attend this meeting if they were in support of moving the thrift store to Radcliffe. Many residents think the thrift shop is getting the short end of the stick by not moving to Radcliffe. It is the opinion of many that the thrift store has been left behind, hidden in a corner of Maplewood that is now no foot traffic. I also asked that the thrift store be put on the agenda tonight, so we could have a discussion about it. I did both of these things, because I hear what our residents are saying, and because I want to help them. I was informed by our city manager today that it was inappropriate to do both of those things, because the council doesn't make those kinds of decisions regarding Radcliffe, the thrift store, or any other department. All those decisions are made strictly by our city manager. If you have any questions about these things, please contact our city manager. I will, however, urge our city manager to please get behind the thrift store. Even if they don't move to Radcliffe, please put them on our city webpage, have a post made on the city Facebook page about them, have a sign made to go outside of the Maplewood Center, so people know where it is located. We could do more for a thrift shop.
Okay. Any other comments from the table?
Of course not.
Okay. Move on to.
Okay, excuse me, I'm gonna say.
Councilmember Lynch.
Okay, I'm not, I just need clarification. When you said, "of course not," I'm not sure what you want such as me to say.
Anything. Every single time that I've asked about other business, no one has commented at all. You asked me to put it on the agenda, I did, and still no one has anything to say. That means there's no interest, so I'm not surprised by that.
Okay. And that wasn't what it was. It was you made your statement on it. In years past, if something went on from another council member, they gave us something in a packet-type form, piece of paper, whatever, so that we knew what it was that we were discussing. I opened it up, and it says "thrift store." I'm not exactly sure what's being discussed at that point, so I'm not prepared as far as what direction you want us to go. If you want me to answer my feelings about the thrift store, first of all, yes, this is a day-to-day operation, which means the city manager and department heads, so the Parks and Rec Department would be in charge of that.
I just said that.
Yes. Well, and that's why I'm saying, I don't know what direction you want me to go, so I'm just saying all of it.
Well, everyone's been at meetings, and the thrift store's been on a lot of people's minds. They've come here several times, all the way back to a few months ago, asking about going to Radcliffe, or if they're closing, or if they could get improvements. So I don't know anything else about the thrift store, but the things we've heard at these meetings.
Okay, I haven't heard about the improvements. I have heard that they didn't wanna go to Radcliffe, so I know the department and the city manager said, "Okay, you can stay at Maplewood and do your thrift store like you're doing, or you can go to Radcliffe and do the other version of what it is." And they decided they were going to stay right there at Maplewood. So they got that piece of what they wanted. So when you look at the rest of it, I know that last year, for the Mother's Day tea, I had discussion, and I said, "I don't understand why you guys aren't putting this stuff on Facebook," and putting a picture of all the kids' jeans and saying, "We have jeans from size this to this, there's this much piece, come get 'em," kind of thing, school time. And none of that was ever done, because.
They didn't know how to do that, and no one from the city has.
But nobody got even back with me. I volunteered to help them, because every year, they have their big sidewalk sale. I volunteered to help at the sidewalk sale this year, because they have 2550 boxes of unopened clothes that are still sitting there. And I'm waiting, 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 and then I find out they decided not to have one this year. So I'm not exactly sure what all on the thrift store. If that is what they wanna do, I'm happy for them to do that, to have the thrift store. Would I like them to go through some of those boxes, because they're starting to smell maybe a little musty in there, probably from some of the boxes, because we don't know what's in some of those boxes or not? Yes, I'd like them to do that, but I think they have a lot of things in there that could be promoted, and just on their Facebook page on Parks and Rec.
They have a Facebook page now. They are promoting things, so things are changing. They're getting a higher quality of donations. The reason they have a lot of things in boxes is because they have zero storage, so they had to take part of their store and curtain it off, and that's the only storage that they have. They have been making a constant effort to improve that store, but they're in a room that hasn't been painted in 40 years. They have air conditioning that's probably older than that. That whole building smells musty, so that's why they're asking for improvements. Now, some of the volunteers have said they do wanna go to Radcliffe, and to compare it to a gift shop that's at Radcliffe, it's like comparing apples and oranges. The gift shop that we have at Radcliffe is gonna be selling Garden City swag. We already talked about t-shirts and coffee mugs and stuff. That's not what the thrift store's about. The thrift store originally was to help people in need, and if you talk to the people that are at our food bank, they say that people come in, or they used to come in when it was at Maplewood, and say, "I need food, but I'm also cold, I need a coat." And they would say, "Go to the thrift store." They can't do that anymore, because they're in a totally separate building. We have residents that go there to buy their kids' school clothes. They go there because they don't have pants to wear to work. There's a need for the thrift store, and to make it successful and keep it going, it's been going for 40 years, why not put them in a place that makes sense where there's foot traffic, instead of in Maplewood? It's very hard right now. Their Facebook page put on there for people to give donations. Someone went to give donations last week, they had no idea what door to go in, so they tried to go in the front door, which was locked, tried to go in the other door that used to be the main entrance, couldn't go in there, finally found it by the library, but there's no signage at all.
And I agree with the sign. I think that's a great idea, having a sign there.
It just seems like Maplewood all of a sudden is pieced together. There's the Meals on Wheels in one part, but you can't get to Meals on Wheels from a thrift store. You have to go out the back door, go all the way around the building. There's lots of problems there. I think the thrift store volunteers are here and they'll tell you, they would love to go to Radcliffe. If the council can't make that decision, I'm okay with that. And I just said that. But there's just things to consider and everybody in the city should be aware when someone comes up to the podium and they talk, it's because that's how they feel. They also talk to me and I'm sure they talk to you guys. So hearing our residents' opinions, there's nothing wrong with that. We should be able to hear them.
And I never said there was.
And I wasn't instructed to provide a packet. Originally, no one else has ever had to put their other business on as an agenda. That was only asked because of me. And when I called our clerk and asked him to put it on our agenda, I wasn't told, "Oh, you have to provide a packet or information."
And that's because Matt hadn't been involved in that before because our council didn't put other business on.
Exactly.
So...
Just to follow up, a couple of comments there. We have signage coming for the stores. It's already been in place so that we have some no-admitting signs on doors that are truly locked. So people aren't wasting their time, but we were putting a thrift shop, library sign together. The Facebook page is a great idea, just as a side note. Talking today to one of our communications people was, you know, who's in charge of the webpage? So everybody's aware, the thrift shop as well as the food bank is under the city's jurisdiction. They are not outside organizations whatsoever. They literally are a volunteer group under the city. The money that we have in the bank is under the city's bank and direction. With the Facebook page, all for it 100%, the question that communications asked was, if they're a city group, all the Facebook pages and all the pages are under one overall authority, but the workers are able to have the authority to update and keep things going. So I have no issue with that and promoting it. I don't know why over the years, technically it wasn't really one of those issues on our webpage that says, "Here's an opportunity and here's things to be purchased." I think it's a great idea to see what's being put out there. I don't believe it's a secret, as it's mentioned a few times, they've been there for 40 years. If somebody's looking for a thrift shop, and I know I've mentioned this in social media or emails to the council, we do have other thrift stores in the city, Salvation Army and Goodwill and other things like that. When we talk about operations and you look at good government, is a thrift shop an operation that a city should be running? Yes and no. I mean, certainly it offers a service, but is it something that needs to be put into a new community center? Where they're at, they've been fine, they've been there for years. The library, I assume, gets some foot traffic coming through there. Nobody left there and has forgotten that the thrift shop exists over in that location. So I have a little trouble understanding how there's no foot traffic at all. If that's the case, because there were more senior programs there, then I would have to look and say, "Okay, then that's an impulse buy." People finished an aerobics class or so, walked down the hallway and just wandering around, decided to walk in. That's not a need buy, that's an impulse buy. It's nice to have something there. If you've got a favorite pizza shop, you don't have to put the pizza shop in the middle of the mall for people to walk around, people will go to that pizza shop. So if you've got a thrift shop there, you've got Salvation Army, you've got other places, people that are in need know exactly where to go, especially even more now that it's being promoted. If we're finding that the attendance is much lower and the revenue coming in is getting lower and lower, it's not because there's just no seniors at that location, it's because it may not be that much of a need for that as it's been expressed here and on social media, that it's such a heavy need. Could be, but it's there. It's been there for 40 years. I don't think we're hiding it by any means. So they've been able to give the, been given the power to do whatever they want. I use an example of how they are existing under the city's jurisdiction. It's kind of like we're the parents and they're the college kids. Do whatever you want, and they've always been able to do whatever they want. Except, as it's been brought up at a former meeting, they were going to spend money on things that aren't related to the thrift shop. I have the thrift shop minutes, the bylaws, I'm sorry, from many years ago. The organization doesn't really exist as an organization anymore. Neither does the food bank. It exists under the city's jurisdiction. So even looking at the bylaws, they're not really true bylaws because it's not a true existing group. It is a volunteer group that works to do great things for us. But clearly their promotion is for senior citizen programs held in Garden City. You know, and that's where they're supposed to donate. So when they ask me about donating $300 to Kentucky flood victims, that's not an appropriate use of the money. I have to make that decision because it's coming out of the city's coffers financially. It's not that it's their money they could do what they want with. They are under the city's jurisdiction, as the food bank is with their revenue also. So when they ask about buying lunch for the library, that's not an appropriate use of money for the senior citizens. It might be a nice offer for them, and apparently they did. And now money was missing a couple of weeks ago, as the council was informed, that the deposit was not equal to what it should have been. We don't know where the money went, we heard some things, but there is money missing. And of course, the library got their free lunch from the senior volunteers. So... Yeah, yeah. So they are under the city's jurisdiction. For me to make the decisions on the libraries or the thrift shop and where they're going and what they're doing, that only makes absolute sense. Because if I say, and talking to the finance director about this, says, "You know what? They want to give money to Sandy Hook, they want to give money to Yvaldi, they want to give..." That's not an appropriate use of money that was garnered for the fact that it's supposed to go to senior program in Garden City. So, I'm sorry, when they got up and spoke and said they should be able to do what they want to do with the money, no, there are limitations, and that's going by their own bylaws. But their bylaws don't really exist because the actual organization doesn't technically exist. They exist under the city's direction. And I cannot okay money from the city coffers to be just given to flood victims or hurricane victims or anyone else. That's why they were said no to or told no.
Have you been making those decisions the whole time that you've been here?
When it was brought to my attention by the staff, yes.
This is just recently?
I'm not sure what they did in the past, other than they put money towards bus trips and activities. As far as I know, they weren't just cutting checks around the country. If they were, beyond inappropriate, because that's city funds, leaving the city coffers to go out, so...
Right, that's what I'm asking, so who was in charge of it before you made these recent decisions?
It would have been Parks and Recreation and senior director and staff, correct?
Okay. And you're doing it now because there's no Parks and Rec director yet?
No, they brought it to my attention and said, "Is this appropriate use of funds?" And I said, "No," talking to the finance director. Also, we're cutting checks to Kentucky? And initially, again, I mentioned this whole story because you look and say, "Well, that's the thrift shop's money, they could do what they want to do with it." It's actually under the city's direction. It just has an image of an outside organization. And we've allowed them and we're allowing them in the future to pretty much do whatever they want. They have their same place they've been forever. But the question now becomes, if they're not getting enough foot traffic, that means we have to move them to where the foot traffic is. Well, there's also a business question of, if they're not getting any business there, then is it a viable business that needs to be put in front of people's eyes? But the statement of that there's a special need and everybody has a need, then they know where to go. It hasn't moved, it's in the exact same spot, so we're kind of playing both sides here. But no, I don't believe the new community center or any other center I've seen actually has a thrift shop at the same time. This whole program started, so everybody knows, I've said it before, in the 80s as a senior gift store, selling arts and crafts made by seniors in the Maplewood Center. It was not a thrift shop store from the beginning, it was just, "We've got arts and crafts, let's sell some stuff." That's what we're doing at our current place, is it's going to be a gift store, but we're also, as we said from the start, if there's senior arts and crafts they want to sell through the store, that's fine. Somewhere over the time, it turned into, "You're emptying out your attic, bring stuff over because we're just going to add it to our gift store," and it eventually became a full thrift shop. So it did not start as a thrift shop at Maplewood. It is a thrift shop now, but that's not what we probably should be doing in our new community center, is starting with a thrift shop when we have the gift store. So they have an option of working at either location or both locations or whatever they like to do. No one's being harmed in this situation whatsoever. They're still offering the service, it's still there, so I'm not sure what the issue is.
A few weeks ago or a few meetings ago, probably three or four, I asked you about the thrift shop and asked if they were 501(c)(3), and you said that you didn't know anything about the thrift shop and that they weren't even part of the city. After that, after that, I made the Facebook page and I made sure I didn't use the Garden City logo because we were told at that meeting it wasn't part of the city. So if the communications department wants to take over that Facebook page, the administrators are the people that are volunteering there. But if the communications department, we can add them to the page so that they can be in charge of it and put the right, you know, signage on there and the city stuff, that can all be taken care of.
Yeah, the issue is who's the administrator of the page itself? We found that out from our past with the department downstairs. When people left, we had to figure out and get back the administration rights.
Right. The Facebook page is only a month old, I mean...
Yeah, so administrator would be under the city, but the rights would be given to the staff to do whatever they like to do, so, and we would encourage that. But, and two members of the thrift shop contacted me about the 501(c)(3). They do fall absolutely under the city. And that's, I believe, what happened in the past when they were, tried to be an outside organization with the bylaws. They stopped filing their paperwork, they obviously don't have an attorney representing them or anything for the paperwork at the state level, they just kind of became a group. And they fall under the city. So all donations made are absolutely still tax deductible to the group. Both the ladies I talked to, I explained to them, if you want to be an outside organization, then you have to go with, you know, become your own group, get your attorneys and get your finance people, file the paperwork and become an outside group, but then you are treated by us as truly an outside organization. So if you do nothing, it's perfect right now. You could still accept, you could do everything you're doing, but if you're just asking for money to be sent to Kentucky for flood victims coming from the city's coffers, that's probably not a thing that's going to pass. So we are not interfering with the thrift shop whatsoever of any image of we're trying to stop them from succeeding or anything. That's not an issue whatsoever. If we can enhance them more, I have no trouble with adding on the promotion in the webpage. That's not unusual to me, I don't understand why it wasn't done in the past, so I would agree with that. But I just mentioned about the Facebook, if someone else is an administrator of city information, we have to make sure we have administrator rights that we can stop somebody that puts something crazy out there and it's under the city's jurisdiction. So again, the only issue is not moving them over to Radcliffe. It's not to stop them from, the money is supposed to go to senior programming. Our gift store is meant to be, all the money goes to senior programming. So they're there making money, they can make, we're going to make money at the gift store. Same people could be on both sides. But when they're giving money to outside organizations outside the state, no longer is that money coming to the senior programs, so...
Okay, Councilmember Squire?
Yeah, I think you had asked who was responsible for it before Mr. Doherty? Wasn't it the city manager previously? Didn't he have the final say?
Oh, absolutely.
Not Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
Okay, so then what changed when you became the city manager?
I don't understand what you mean.
What do you...
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed.
But traditionally, from what I understand...
Ultimately, you're responsible.
Well, he's ultimately responsible for everything.
Yeah, so when they would go on a senior bus trip, our employees would go and talk to their group and ask about getting some money from their coffers. There's about $15,000, I believe, that they have in the bank, $15,000 for the thrift shop. And they would ask for money so that they could reduce the cost of the bus trip. So they would receive up to half of the cost of the bus trip, so the cost could be lowered. They asked a couple of weeks ago, I believe they were given a quarter of the money for the bus trip. And they were explaining, "You know you're making the bus trip more expensive now by not giving us more money," but that was their decision. Interesting, again, we go back to what I've talked about. It is a city group with city funds, the thrift shop. So our Parks and Recreation wants to reduce the cost of a senior bus trip and asking a group that belongs to the city, that has $15,000 in the bank, and has given a quarter of the money for the trip. I don't understand why we have $15,000 in the bank for this program. I think it all should be going towards senior activities and programs and even offer some free bus trips and not just sit and have us kind of ask for some money back to run senior programs. If they're running senior trips, that's fantastic, and they could do that. So it's just kind of an unusual relationship, I think, that people did not understand over the years and wondering why now all of a sudden the city's engaged and involved. The city was always engaged and involved. The issue now is they ask for money to go, sent out to the state. They now want to move to another location, and we're good with where they are right now.
I think part of their confusion was they've done things outside of Garden City before and those things were not denied. That's why I asked, who was in charge of it prior to you?
Yeah, I missed the appropriate funds.
Councilmember Lynch.
I can go back to when Cheryl Stimpian was the senior coordinator, and I know she worked very closely with the group. And Pat McCarge was the Parks and Rec director. And so Cheryl would work with the group, they'd make some decisions on what they wanted to spend money on, what they'd like to do, and I know they used to throw some really nice parties and New Year's Eve parties and things like that, that obviously since COVID they haven't been able to do a lot of lately. But she worked very closely with them, and because she was Parks and Rec and senior director, they agreed on things, no problem. Pat McCarge was always informed and it never really had to go up higher because it was all handled in the Parks and Rec department. When Cheryl was no longer there and Pat McCarge was no longer there, that means there's a change of administration in Parks and Rec. And maybe that those administrations didn't work as closely with them as they had previously. And that's, but it's ultimately Parks and Rec director, the senior coordinator working with them, and the ultimate decision goes to the city manager if the other two can't come up with a viable option. It's always been that way.
Okay, any other comments from the table? Okay, we'll move on to public comments, item 13. Anybody wishing to speak? There's a three-minute time limit. Come up to the podium.
Mayor?
Councilmember Caerfotos?
Public comments are things for not on the agenda. Do we ask the public if they want to comment on anything about other business? They're not allowed to talk about it under public comment?
Yeah, we'll let them, if they want to talk about it, they... Yeah. Okay, I got Laura O'Connor.
That's about what we just discussed.
Okay, right, that's what they're asking.
Yeah, I'm calling her up.
If you have more to offer.
Did you want to come up?
Yes.
Okay. Come up to the podium, please. Laura O'Connor, right?
This is a pattern that I've seen for months with this city. But I do want to start out. Number one, we are in a unique time in this country, particularly before the midterm elections, everyone's stressed out. I want to lead by example, I've done it before Christmas time. People who need help should get help. And if I have something to give and I can give it, I do likewise. I expect the same from others. So people who, these are, I have been making fridge devices. I have two kinds, there's keychains and balloons. Stacy, I want to get a balloon and a lunch.
Thank you.
The pattern that I'm seeing is that at every opportunity, the city wants to turn their constituents into profit centers instead of citizens. The one that just recently came up to me, and Kim, maybe you can help me, where there have been times where the city, the library runs events for free and Parks and Rec charges a fee. That's not right. The citizens... I know the medium income is, in Garden City, is about, the median is slightly below average. You know, and again, this is an example. Most senior citizens, not all senior citizens, most senior citizens are considered a vulnerable population. And because they know how it is to hurt, that's why they want to help people who are hurting in Kentucky. I don't know if there was a flood or whatever it was, but there was a disaster in Kentucky and they wanted to take their hard-earned money to help people who needed help. And they also wanted to give a free lunch to the library because the library very much helps them. And the library is basically really, in my opinion, unjustifiably being attacked by the city council. You know, I know that you've convinced a lot of citizens that the money is truly owed. I'm quite frankly not buying it, but I don't have the time to say. I, you know what, I believe...
Ms. O'Connor, this is the end of your three-minute time.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Nan Frye?
You got to bear with me, I got a miserable cold. So I'm here on behalf of the thrift store. The comment that was made about us reducing the price for the bus, we never heard anything about that because we would gladly give the money. I don't know who's making the decisions for us, but it's not us, the volunteers. So I just want to make that clear. Crap, and blood. Okay, and as far as donations, you know, we do the Mother's Day, we pay, you know, for the bands for the Christmas and the Mother's Day party, we pass out the plants... plants on Mother's Day, we do putt-putt for the guys. We do, the kids come in and can shop at Christmas time. We donate thousands of dollars for the Garden City Park exercise equipment, over a thousand for the production equipment to show movies for the Garden City residents. And yes, they are trying to just, well, originally, they just wanted to get rid of us, excuse me, completely. You know, we had one lady in there that was just throwing everything away, said we're closing down. The residents spoke up, there's not enough advertisement. We need some kind of flyers thrown out because a lot of the seniors, and I'm for one, am computer stupid. You know, I don't go on computers, I have an old flip phone and, you know, but there's more people like me. And I just think we're getting the short end of the deal, we got to beg for money. I mean, we want to take this one woman out for lunch. They're only going to give us $100, and then we got to put it on somebody's credit card and then get reimbursed afterwards, which is a hassle. And this woman has worked for Maplewood, the thrift store, for years. She was leaving there and at Merriman and Maplewood, she got hit by another car that, excuse me, that ran a light. So now she's an assistant living home. But she was one that's 97 years old, and she would come up there, and if somebody couldn't work, she would volunteer to work for them. We would like to take her out to lunch. I'm hoping they will support us and give us more money for it. And with the other thing with the money, you know, we donate so much, but nobody's including us. We're the volunteers, and they always said, you know, we have a say in the matter. We have no say. Nobody gives a crap about us or the seniors anymore. And I don't know, I guess I'm rambling on, but something's got to be done. There's got to be more advertisement, something that people can read. I mean, you know, if you're not on the list, you don't get a certain paper and all that kind of stuff. I think everybody, every resident in Garden City should get some kind of flyer to announce. I've been in Garden City almost 28 years. I've been volunteering for eight years for the Meals on Wheels and the thrift store. I never knew the thrift store was even in there. I even taught an arts and craft class back when, way back when my kids were young.
Ms. Frye, this is the end of your three minutes. All right, thank you.
I never knew it was there.
Right, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Yvonne Bond?
Hello, council, mayor, city clerk, city manager. I just listened to some statements that were false. Let me give you a little bit of history about the organization of the group. I'm the second longest volunteer there. At one point, we managed our own banking account. Whenever this senior advisor wanted money for bus trips or et cetera, we wrote checks. Under Monica, we wanted to become a 501(c)(3). We filled out the paperwork. We never got a response until all of this come up about the thrift shop not going to Radcliffe is when we discovered that that 501(c)(3) did not go through that we had filed for. Every time on every senior advisor, whenever they requested money, we have always given them at least half. So I don't know why this last trip was only one-fourth because at our meeting, we voted to give half of the cost of the bus, plus, she said, there was a 3% additional cost for the gas. We agreed to pay for half of that. I don't understand why now we can't say what it is that we want to do with the money that we volunteer, and we've never spent any of it on ourselves. The only thing that the seniors ever did was once a year, we would go to lunch. All of these years of volunteering, that's the only thing that we ever took for ourselves. You know, so, and I talked to this city manager. He told me that under the city, that we were, we did have the status of a 501(c)(3). One thing I don't understand, when we turned over our monies, you know, like into the city coffer, it was our understanding that it was going to be easier for us, that we wouldn't have to go to Chase every month and do this banking ourselves and write these checks. No one ever said that when you give, put that money in the city coffer, that that money belongs to the city. $14,000, I'm told, that if we decide that we want to go back to do our own banking, that we will forfeit. And that's not right. That's not fair. We come up there Monday through Thursday from 9 until 2:00, and you're talking about that place smell. For the past six months, we order supplies. One of the things is the Swiffer. Every other Thursday, I mop that floor. I sweep that floor every week. So the place is not musty and smelly, so people.
Ms. Bond, this is the end of your three-minute comment.
Okay, but council, come over and visit and see for yourself. Stop taking all of these rumors, which are not true.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Geraldine Pulwalsick?
Close enough.
Close enough?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, let's see if I can get this. Hi, I volunteered at the thrift store approximately three years. I've really enjoyed it. A lot of the seniors come in and say, I didn't even know you were here. We need to have more advertisement for they know we're here. Because you're, it's amazing how many people come in now that they know we're there to buy clothes for their kids, because we have a table that's $2 a bag if you can put it in there. And you'd be surprised how many people come to get their kids clothes for school, clothes to play outside with. To be honest, I shop thrift stores. If I have to go to a wedding, I'll go to a thrift store and pick something up. I'm not going to go to a regular store and pay 50 bucks for a dress where I can get it at a thrift store for 10 bucks. It's ridiculous. But they really enjoy shopping there. I enjoy working there. I get to meet all types of people. They get to meet us, you know, and it's been a pleasure. And the thing about Radcliffe, they don't want us there as a thrift store. They want us there to go sell their gifts in their gift shop. And no, we don't want to sell gifts. We want to be for the community, supplying clothing, you know, things they need, you know, like we sell a lot of kitchen supplies. We want to take care of the community. We don't want to be selling the Garden City t-shirts, Garden City mugs, Garden City hats, you know? And that's what we told, that's why we're not, we don't want to go to Radcliffe. Now, if they would take us at a thrift store, that would be fine, but they don't want to, you know? That's all I have to say, but I really like volunteering there, you know? And I will not go and volunteer to sell your mugs, your t-shirts and that. Okay? Have a nice day.
Thank you, ma'am. Suzanne Hill?
They've said everything I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else under public comments? Mr. Murray?
This isn't public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thrift store.
I'll step off limits, be there's somebody else.
Okay.
Sharon Hassett, chairman of the Commission on Aging. At one point, it was mentioned that the thrift store didn't even have a bathroom access at Maplewood, and that was very disheartening. I'm glad to hear they're getting some signage. The thrift store is advertised in the Echo newspaper, which is put out by the city. They have a full-page ad in there for the thrift store. I questioned that at the Commission on Aging meeting. If the thrift store is not part of the city, why are we advertising in the Echo newspaper? So we need a little bit of clarity there, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Kim Doold, I just want to say real quick that I think what needs to happen is maybe we need to take a community assessment, see what our community needs are, and go from there. And if this is truly going to be our community center, if we need a thrift shop, let's base it over at the community center where it will get more foot traffic. And if it's under the city, there's, if optics are an issue, I've been in a lot of thrift stores that look pretty darn nice. If the city is behind this, then the city can control that also. So we need to go out to the community, find out what our community needs. And if we need Meals on Wheels and we need a food pantry, then chances are real good we need a thrift store like this, too. And I know we have some already. Doesn't hurt to have another one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Murray?
First question, I know we're not supposed to talk about previous conversations here, but I'd like to say that with the bus, I think it's a great idea, but again, I don't think Mr. Doherty has given you a complete picture. We need to know where we're going to have an enclosed facility that's climate-controlled for storage, the cost of maintenance, the insurances, how are you going to find CDL drivers for this? And there should be a projection of what the cost is for the next three years. Until he provides you something like that, I don't think you should just go spend $140,000. If anything, that $140,000 might be able to be used to properly store our fire equipment when we have the renovation done over there. The other issue we have right now is, is a couple meetings ago, Mr. Earl asked the city manager for documentation about using council people on committees. What I've seen is, obviously.
Mr. Murray, we're on, we're on the thrift store right now, not, not under public comments. We're, we're taking comments on the thrift store right now. You can come back up under public.
I'm missed, Kurt, I thought this was, you said public comments.
We're on thrift store. Do you have anything to say about the thrift store?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Obviously, I always have something to say, Mr. Walker, you know that. But the thrift store, what I'm seeing right now is, is they need to go to Radcliffe to continue. There was comments, there's other thrift stores within the area. Our thrift store is selling it cheaper and also putting a little bit of extra money in there. So it needs to be helped. I've noticed massive improvements in the area. They're reorganized, they've taken a lot of proactive things, actions to make it better. And I don't believe that the city manager has exclusive rights on deciding where that's going, and I think that's what he said today. I'd like you to corral this gentleman because he's out of control right now, and I fear what's going to happen. And with the thrift store, we got to make it happen for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on the thrift store?
I'm sorry, I broke my foot. I'll be there soon. I'm going to spend a second, I'm so sorry. All right. Hi, Lauren Anthony from Sheridan Street. So back in March, there was a Facebook post that kind of started all of this, where somebody had commented on how somebody from the Maplewood Center told the thrift store people, we're shutting you down, you're not going to Radcliffe, you're getting out, get out of here. And so there was a huge public outcry on Facebook, and then the following meeting on March 7, that was addressed, people were talking. I believe specifically Mayor Walker and council member Squires had discussed it, and they had made comments stating that you guys as a council decide everything that's going on with the Radcliffe Center. You said, we're making that decision, don't worry. I think the exact wording was, don't worry about it, that they were going to get taken care of. Then, and also the whole thing about rumors. Don't listen to rumors on social media. They're all rumors, they're not real. Don't listen to what happens on social media. Come to find out several months later, they were not rumors, they were true. They were not going with us to Radcliffe Center for all the various reasons that Mr. Doherty said. So now I come up here today to find everybody saying, oh, the city manager is in charge of the thrift store. He's always been in charge of the thrift store, that's always how it was supposed to be. So why were we told seven months ago that city council decides what happens to city, to the thrift store, when now suddenly we're being told that the city manager decides what happens with the thrift store? I'm kind of noticing a disturbing trend where it seems like things happen, where people post about stuff on Facebook because we don't have a newspaper, we don't really have any other way to get information, and then that's kind of shot down at city council meetings as rumors, don't listen to it, it's not a big deal. And nine out of 10 times, they end up being true. They end up being real, and then it seems like we start going after them. Happened with the library, now it's happening with the thrift store. It's like if somebody goes against Mr. Doherty's initial decision, now it's got to turn into this whole war against them. I mean, the fact that you're making comments about misappropriation of funds from them when we had a major misappropriation of funds with our communications department and when it was brought to our city manager's attention, he just dismissed it, like he didn't even look into it. That's absolutely ridiculous, though, that now when you bring this up, it turns into a whole hu- huge ordeal. It, it, it just seems ridiculous to me that it's like, he, it feels like things are being turned into the enemy just because it's what the people want and just because it's not what you want. But we're the ones that elected people, we're the constituents. So if we're speaking, we're going to speak out in any way that we're able to. Sometimes that's going to be on Facebook, sometimes it's going to be here, being upset. That's going to happen. And if you're just going to say, well, we're not going to listen to emotion, we're going to make decisions based on what we want to do or based on what Mr. Doherty wants to do, that's absolutely ridiculous. Of course, we're going to get upset about that stuff, especially when we're constantly getting conflicting information from meeting to meeting to meeting. And I'm sure I'm out of time now, so I'm going to go sit back down, and my leg is shaking. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Anybody else under the thrift store? Okay, city managers report. Well, no. We need to have the public comment. Public comments, sorry. Anybody wishing to speak under public comments?
The issue we have right now, I believe, is, is there's, we're going where we discussed council members going to committees. Mr. Earl asked for some sort of litigation to state that we can't get in trouble. We've now seen where you've made appointments and none of them are on council. So my question is, should we have an open meeting on that and a motion to implement in our charter that there should not be council members on these committees? Another example we have is, a couple months ago, we were, I was embarrassed when I seen our budget was out of line. Our charter says we have to have the revenues for the expenditures. I was informed the state law allows you to do that. My question is, should you not have to implement a footnote in the charter allowing that? And again, you need to have a public hearing, a motion there, and you have to make a decision to put it into the charter. And my question is, is have we neglected to update the charter to keep it modern and efficient to where there is not confusion? And another problem we have is, a couple weeks ago, we were having a discussion of Hubbard, where people are just kamikaze-ing down there. What people forgot to realize, we were speaking speed bumps. When Kelly Kirwin was on council, we were looking for something on the, in the park. We looked at the speed bumps and that not being practical because of snow removal. And the ramble part would be too expensive. So Mr. Gibbons has told me he's reviewed Hubbard, and there's really not been many incidents, which I guess keeps him from asking you to put signs. But I'm wondering, can you put a sign in an area, even if the measurables aren't there, just to make it safer for our kids?
Kind of sign?
A stop sign, maybe a three-sided stop sign. There is one at Bach &amp; Schuman. And we need to look at it because there are people that are driving crazy, and our law enforcement cannot be anywhere. And we do need to clean up what's going on behind the cigar shop and the car wash. That is out of line. I say get some ball bearing, stainless steel ball bearings and place them in right places of windshield, send them to go home, have to explain to daddy, but you guys can't do that, but maybe I will. But other than that, have a good day.
Thank you. Anybody else under public comments?
You know, I did not plan.
State your name again, ma'am.
Laura O'Connor.
Thank you.
I did not plan to come here. I saw Stacy's post of her retraction, and that really did tick me off. I want to remind you that the election is only a few weeks away, and you'll learn, maybe you won't, that we voted for you. You work for us. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a quick comment, Nan Frye. I was just wondering why we don't have anything here for the meetings for the hearing impaired. I was just wondering why we don't have anything here for the meetings, for the hearing impaired. We had a volunteer with us last time, and she couldn't hear anything anybody was saying. And the public that watches this, I'm sure there's hearing impaired, but there's nothing for them to hear. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Look into that. Anybody else?
Can I speak about the thrift shop now?
Okay, now I'm up here as the DDA Director. So, Saturday, we had a wonderful day here in Garden City. We had the chili cook-off. We were offering rides back and forth to the police and fire department open houses. But I just really wanted to get up and thank everybody, thank all of our volunteers. I want to thank everybody that came out to the chili cook-off to help make it a success. Our chili teams, of course, it's not cheap to make 10 gallons of chili. Some of them had brisket in it, so I'm sure that was a little bit of money. Our judges, everybody. And I don't know how much money came in yet. It hasn't been counted. But I did want to let everyone know, because there have been questions going around. So, our Garden City Police Department took third place with their chili. I always say this wrong. The Garden City Over 30 Hockey Association took second place this year. And our very own fire department, as it should be, came in first with their chili. Sorry to the PD, but that's how it worked out. People's Choice this year went to the whole darn family down at the American Legion. So, lots of fun down there that day. It was a little cool, but that was okay. It's good chili-eating weather. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else under public comments? City manager's report.
All right, just a couple things I would just stated earlier, just to make sure there's clarity. Apparently, we did receive calls at City Hall, because the staff was throwing out the stuff out at a thrift shop. I believe it was a volunteer from the thrift shop, Pat, I believe, was the one that threw out a lot of the boxes and supplies. Someone shaking their head just to make sure. So, it wasn't the city that went to the thrift shop and started emptying stuff out. It just, we got a lot of bad press on that, as far as complaints that we were out there just destroying things, and it wasn't the city. So, the other part is, the credit card is $100 petty cash. It was for, I believe, the 39-year worker, Ruth, for the luncheon. It was told very clearly, here's the $100 that we have for petty cash. Anything above that, just send us back the credit card receipt, so it'd be reimbursed. It was kind of a little change, and tough in translation to get, like the city was limiting it. We weren't limiting it. We just have $100 petty cash. So, we're not sitting with hundreds of dollars to give out. So, that answers why we asked for receipts, so somebody had to pay the difference, because actually, I was there that day. It was about 12 ladies, 13 ladies, that went out to lunch together. So, it was going to be more than $100. But we were willing to pay for that, because that was taking care of a long-term volunteer over there, and it was a senior activity and event. So, that was not even a question. It was only brought to my attention after the fact, I heard about the discrepancy about the credit card, that they were unhappy about that. But it's because we don't have that much cash sitting around to give to them. Just one final thing there is the main phone line, so everybody knows, is going to have intermittent service for the next Wednesday and Thursday this week. If you have to call a department, it may be best to try to call directly and see they're on the website, or in the Golden Book, or any other way, if you're looking to call the department. Don't just call the general phone line. It may have a little trouble getting through. So, if anybody gets frustrated calling the government, try to call the departments directly if possible. And again, most of those numbers are on the website. That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Earl?
For Chief, I have nothing to say.
Okay. Councilmember DeMichael?
Yeah, I've got something tonight. I want to just go ahead and circle back on a recent matter involving a city department and some personnel changes that ensued. Our oath requires integrity as we operate for the citizens of this city, and because of that, I feel compelled to ask that we look further into the matter to know who knew what and when. It has come to my attention through research that a member of this council had knowledge of the training cancellation and trip well in advance of it being formally raised. They failed to alert city management and chose to not be transparent so the appropriate action could be taken. This failure to act is a breakdown of ethics. Knowing of wrongdoing and not raising it implies being complicit with the act itself. Instead, the information of this wrongdoing came forward from an informant months later, resulting in over $100,000 loss for the city and continued wages and benefits for the personnel involved. Moving forward, I am requesting that we look into this matter to ensure due diligence and accountability of all involved to uphold the integrity of the seats that we hold. So, I'm asking that we look into this and find out which and who council members knew ahead of time, and why this wasn't brought in and forward appropriately. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires?
Yeah, the chili cook-off was a lot of fun. And our American Legion family did win the People's Choice. They were so excited. Also, I still think there's some misinformation out there about the thrift shop. You know, Lauren, when I talked about the thrift shop, that's when everybody was here thinking it was closing. And I was assuring them that we are not closing them. But the way that you said it came across that I wasn't sure what you meant. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Can I clarify on camera?
Pardon me?
Can I clarify right now, or do you want to talk?
No, we'll talk after. Thank you.
Only speak when you call the podium, please.
Okay, and...
That's the rule. It's always been the rule.
That's what I was asking, though.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lynch?
Yes. First of all, yes. Outstanding Saturday in Garden City. The firefighters' open house, the police department open house, the car show, motorcycle show, there are a lot of motorcycles there this year, and the chili cook-off. Oh, and the afterburn. So, it was a great Saturday in Garden City. I enjoyed it. I wanted to answer a couple people that had brought up questions. Hubbard Street and the speed bump question, the chief and I have talked a couple times. He has an idea for over there at Hubbard Street. He's putting together, he's going to have to do an RFP to take care of some stuff, but...
He told me to do it.
Okay, perfect. So, he is looking into doing something on Hubbard Street, as well as a couple other streets. The flyer sent out, I'm glad to know that it's in the Echo newspaper. Maybe it could go out in the water bill the next time, a blurb in there about the thrift store being open and...
And the buzz?
Good deals. So, that would be nice. The bylaws, somebody asked a question about the bylaws and why they could and couldn't spend different money. I just wanted to read these out loud, because if you hear the whole paragraph, it might make some sense. "The objective of this committee is to provide friendship and workmanship toward the improvement of senior citizens programs held in Garden City. This is accomplished through purchasing various needed items for the Maplewood Senior Center on a periodic basis," because that's where the senior programs were, "sponsoring various activities with the Garden City Community Resource Department, Senior Center, and donating items towards health and welfare of other senior citizens," meaning, as you look at the whole thing in Garden City. So, that's why, if there was a question about why you could or couldn't spend money, hopefully that takes care of that one. And then, I think it was Nan who mentioned about the ADA accommodations. On the bottom of every agenda, it says, "The city of Garden City will provide necessary auxiliary aids and services, such as signers and audiotapes, to individuals with disabilities attending meetings or hearings. A two-week notice is required. For assistance, please contact the administration office," and it gives a telephone number. So, it is there. So, if somebody has a previous knowledge that they want to attend the next council meeting, then they need to make a telephone call, call the clerk's office, whatever, and something will be arranged, because it takes a little bit of time to find a person that can come in and sign, or whatever else is needed. Okay? And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kara Folis?
Regarding that, our agendas don't come out until the Thursday before the meeting, so I'm not sure how someone could give a two-week notice if they wanted to talk about something, and they needed someone that's hearing impaired to come and sign.
If it's a last-minute one, it would be a problem, yes.
So, maybe we could say, just by the time the agenda comes out. I'm not sure how often we would use that, but it needs to make sense. I just want to say that I'm glad we talked about the thrift store, and I hope that the communication gets better with them. I think that we're not hearing everything that they say all the time, and I hear from them all the time that they just don't know what's going on. So, maybe now, after talking about it, we can make a better effort to communicate with them, with our senior coordinator, or you as the city manager, but someone needs to let them know what's going on. I was very glad to see that the notify app started. I think that's wonderful, and I think a lot of our residents will get on there and think it's great, too. A few meetings ago, I asked about the grant for a walking path at Florence Park, and I think that the city manager misunderstood. I wasn't asking about a new grant. Way back in December of '21, some residents were asked to write letters of support that were required to be sent in with a grant request. So, we already requested the grant, so I want to know what happened to it.
I'd have to find out, Councilwoman, that I know it wasn't a county grant, because we receive those county grants, and I don't believe the walking path was part of it, so I'm not sure if that was another...
Right, that's what I'm saying. If you could just get back to me and let me know, but I know that some residents wrote, it's called a letter of support, that had to be sent in with the grant request. So, that was December of '21. Also, I wanted to say that as inflation rises and residents tighten their belts, I'm hearing more and more discontent from residents regarding the sidewalk ordinance. I'm very worried that the city may be sued soon if we continue to require homeowners to install sidewalks that cost tens of thousands of dollars before getting a C of O. A couple meetings ago, our state senator Dana Polhanki was here, I hope I said her name right, and she talked about that she helped the city of Canton get millions of dollars to install their sidewalks and make their city walkable. I'm just wondering if anybody has contacted her from our administration and asked how she did that, and if we could do the same.
I left two messages for her assistant, Dan Winters, and I never heard anything back.
Okay. Maybe we could call again.
Dan Sunders? Yeah, I'm sorry, Dan Sunders.
I also wanted to mention, the chili cook-off, the police and fire department had their open houses, and I thought it was wonderful. I saw tons of kids there learning a lot from our officers, and I think it's a wonderful event in Garden City. And I also agree with Councilwoman DeMichael that we should look further into the communications department issue. That would be a wonderful thing that we should do. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobs?
Just a couple things. The Garden City Business Alliance, again, with the trunk-or-treat, October 27th, at the Radcliffe Center. I was there last year. It was with my grandson. It was a lot of fun. It was a great time, great area. It is $1 ticket for registration. What time does it start, Jackie?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Again, go on their website, get your ticket, get signed up. It's a lot of fun, and I think they're limiting it to 1,000 people, 1,000 kids this time, or this year. So, don't be left out. Lot of fun. Mr. Miller, is there, somebody asked me about a sample ballot, when it would be coming out on the website. Do you have any info on that?
Waiting still. I don't have one yet. I've made one at the counter, but it's not suitable to post, because I had to make copies of it.
Okay, so as soon as you get it, it'll come out on the...
I'm still waiting. I would love it.
Okay. And finally, the chili cook-off. I don't know if people realize how much work it actually is. My group, the hockey group, we've done it probably about 10 years now. We have a lot of fun with it, probably more fun than some of the other teams, but we're also there right around 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, and we're one of the last groups to leave. I know this year, at 7:30, when I got there, it was 35 degrees and very cold, and most of the other teams were already there. And we wait and get our health inspection, and then we go to cook. It's a long day. It's a lot of work for the teams that are involved. It's rewarding when you get to do it, and you watch people eat it, and they like the chili. But again, it's a lot of work, and they appreciate, I know all the teams appreciate when you tell them what a good job they did. But it's a good time, a lot of work that a lot of people don't see going into it. Everything is done fresh, right there, at the last minute. So, Kim, great job putting it on, and just a lot of fun. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I just wanted to do an early advertisement for the Community Shred Day that's coming up Saturday, November 5th, from 10 until 1. Also, we will be doing the prescription drug disposal, and then also, we really tried to make it a big collection event for the home pantry. So, any non-perishable foods, toiletries, cash donations for the food pantry. We'll accept up to five paper grocery bags or cardboard banker boxes. So, to get those in, again, that's Saturday, November 5th, from 10 until 1. And please bring some canned goods in exchange for the service that's being done by the volunteers out there. Also, in regards to the sample ballot, a version of our ballot is available on the MVIC, the Michigan Voter Information Central. That is a state-run website, so you can see everything that will be on the ballot. It just doesn't look like our ballot. So, as soon as we get sample ballots, I will get them posted. We don't have them from the printer as of yet. And then, also, I think if you have an absentee ballot, and you have voted it, please make sure that you sign the outside of the envelope, and that you can bring it into City Hall, put it in our drop box here, or in the outside drop box, or put it in the mail, and we'll get it, and we'll record that we received it. And you can also see that on the Michigan Voter Information Central, too. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I got a communication to pass on to the residents. Household hazardous waste collection, this Saturday, October 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 o'clock. Location is Wayne County Community College, 21,000 North Line Road in Taylor. If you have antifreeze, motor, gasoline, automobile batteries, fire extinguishers, mercury, thermometers, cell phones, computers, paint, anyway, they'll take all that hazardous waste. They don't do this very often, and they move it around the county, but it's this Saturday in Taylor, from 8:00 to 1:00. I also want to say, great job to police and fire on the open house. It's always a great day. Chili cook-off, same thing. It brings our community together. And then, on a sad note, we lost one of our good volunteers this week. Mark Hammer passed away. He was on the Border Review, and he also volunteered at the Straight Farmhouse Museum. And so, our prayers go out to Mark Hammer's family on his passing. He was a great guy. And thank all you for coming out. Thank you thrift shop volunteers. We do like what you do. I know Ruth Short, sweet lady, she goes to my church. She's been doing it for years. And we do appreciate all of our volunteers. That's all I have. No further business. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.